Good morning. It's 8:30, and I'm going to call the Clay County Board of Commissioners meeting for April 2nd to order. First order of business is approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer a motion to approve the agenda with the addition asking for an approval of the letter of support for the Morehead Center Mall redevelopment TIF district development extension.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we've got employee recognition. And I have got... Okay, the first person we're going to recognize is Linda Cruz, who wasn't able to make it today, but we have Sandy Thorne from Social Services. Linda has been with us for 30 years. Tell us a little bit about Linda.
I sure can. So Linda started with Social Services as the front desk up on 5th floor, answering phones and seeing people as they came in. She moved to my unit two years later and has been with my unit ever since. She's my most senior person in my unit now with experience or longevity with the county, which is pretty cool. She started as an OSS, moved to a support enforcement aide, and is now a CSO. So she's kind of run through the whole gamut of different positions in my unit in the child support area. She's seen a lot of changes, including a lot of law changes, court processes, and our unit has moved three times, from 5th floor to 1st floor to 4th floor. So lots of changes there. Let's see, so Linda has a lot of historical knowledge about the agency and the program, and that's always an asset to us, so grateful that she's here.
Wonderful. Let her know we appreciate her.
All right, thank you.
Next up, Julie. Julie Kennedy has been with us 30 years as well, I believe. Yep. And Corey, tell us a little bit about Julie.
I started at this position two years ago, and Julie was kind of a wild card for me. I didn't know much about her department, and I quickly realized I don't need to know much about her department, she takes care of it. So whenever there's a question with anything hazardous or anything like that, we just go to Julie, and she's got all the answers and knows it all. So I'd like to thank you very much for all the support you've given me and for 30 years with the county.
Thank you, Julie. We're lucky to have you. Okay, next on the agenda, we've got approval of payments...
Citizens.
No, citizens be heard. Is anyone here want to address the commission on any topic not on today's agenda? Steve, do we have anybody online?
We have no one, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next, we have approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, approval of minutes from March 12th and March 19th, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, have motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we've got a proclamation. This is National County Government Month, and we have a proclamation we're going to bring up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may recall, each April, National Association of County Government brings forward a resolution or a recognition for the great work that county government does throughout the United States. This year, Ramsey County Commissioner and NACO President Mary Jo Maguire has the focus of Forward Together, Forward Together, and Connecting, Inspiring, and Leading. And so this morning, we do have a resolution that we've brought forward for your consideration. And, Mr. Chair, I believe that you're going to have us read this out loud.
I'll start us off. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 330 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and...
Whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives, and...
Whereas Clay County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and...
Whereas, under the leadership of National Association of Counties President Mary Jo Maguire, NACO is highlighting county leadership throughout the lens of Forward Together, celebrating the role of county governments in connecting, inspiring, and leading as intergovernmental partners, and...
Whereas, that role includes a responsibility to inspire county residents to engage with their communities and to lead by highlighting our strength as intergovernmental partners, and...
Whereas, each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and...
Whereas, through their commitment to public service, Clay County employees dedicate their time, skills, and expertise for the benefit of their neighbors, promoting healthy communities, fostering conditions for economic growth, strengthening infrastructure, coordinating emergency management, or managed justice in public safety systems, with an overall goal of improving residents' quality of life. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National County Government Month, recognizing the important work of county governments and its employees. Adopted this second day of April 2024.
Mr. Chair, I move the proclamation.
Have a motion second for the proclamation. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody that joined in the reading. Okay. Okay, next we have... I have lost my paperwork. Okay, we have a request approval for a letter of support for the Morehead Center Mall Development Tax Increment Finance District Development Extension to 10 years. We have Derek LePlante, Downtown Morehead, Inc., here today to fill us in. Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, County Administrator Larson, for squeezing us in here on the agenda. So this has come together very quickly. Just mid-last week, we had an opportunity to potentially go for this five-year extension to a TIF rule, which basically, in current law right now, you have to make substantial kind of completion and gaining kind of that increment within five years of the certification of the TIF district. Now, we do not have the district created, but we intend to create this district within the next couple of months. We know this project is large, larger than most TIFs that you see across the state of Minnesota, and we already are expecting that we'd be pushing towards that 10-year timeframe to kind of gather that increment and see that full completion. This does not affect the duration of the TIF or any kind of funding associated with us. If anything else, it helps us gain as much increment as possible to obviously help the district, but help the overall tax base for the entire county and city as well. So what is happening here is we are requesting this letter of support for the extension of the five-year TIF rule to 10 years. We have a hearing, House Tax Committee hearing tomorrow at 10:30 in the morning, so I'll be making the journey to St. Paul. Representative Keeler is taking the lead on that. We have Representative Joy and Senator Kupac also aware of this, and we expect if it proceeds to the House, we'll see it go to the Senate side as well. We're seeing a positive outcome with this. This is, this project, as presented many times to the county before, has garnered a lot of attention from the state, including most recently, a $1 million deed redevelopment grant that we received, which is just fantastic news. We actually got, it's a $2 million program statewide, a million for the metro, a million for greater Minnesota, and we saw a million dollars come to Morehead. It's just truly fantastic what we're seeing. So we have a lot of attention on this project. Provided, I think it's gotten passed around, but I provided a map to the county commissioners here. This is one of our tools that we'll be using for our testimony tomorrow. This reflects the milestones, what we can kind of say is phasing across the project, what we're anticipating right now, a little bit of the layout, and what each phase is anticipating to garner from a construction estimated value. So I'll maybe just say it out loud here for the folks that are listening. Estimated investments, so construction estimate of about $500 million of new value, nearly 1,300 housing units, that's about $250 million of construction value, about $58 million in commercial space, $105 million in civic space, and 2,200 parking units. So we have a lot going. And again, the reason why this request is so important is because of the amount of projects that we have. Most of these TIF requests are a one building, maybe a second building that has a second phase to it, but the fact that we have potentially 10 mixed-use buildings within this 18-acre site, we are seeking that flexibility to give us the most benefit to capture that increment. So we'd be certainly appreciative of a letter of support from the county, full knowing that we'll be coming back here within the next couple of months with the full TIF details that I'd be happy to share with the county at that point in time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the county may have.
Any questions? Yeah, Paul?
So as far as the TIF itself, what is the length of the TIF, or is that project to project?
Yeah, it's still, it's still in progress right now, but it would be a 26-year TIF is what we're looking at at this point in time. So that's the max that we have under the ability of the state statute right now. That would be the district-wide, so the whole site that you see on your map here, the 18 acres, and then we would be, you know, working with our master development partner as well as many other developers to build within the site. What's unique about this one too, and again, why I think it's so important to have this extension, is we could rush this, but the problem with rushing this and having maybe three of these buildings be built at the same time and open at the same time is we'd be flooding the market with a number of units, a number of square footage, that makes it very hard to absorb. We don't want to put the project in jeopardy. It has to be phased appropriately, that we're seeking the right tenants and seeking the number of residential units that we want to uplift as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Just an observation, this is an exciting time, and this activity is long overdue. When I came here in 2006, there were discussions about this and the underpass and a lot of other things, and now it's all taking place, and it's a pretty gratifying scene. Your organization has been a big part of that, and we are grateful to partner with you. And as always, we're partners with the City of Morehead and look forward to working with them on this and other initiatives. So we have a request for a letter of recommendation on this. We have, I would entertain motion.
Make a motion to approve the, to sign the letter of support for the Morehead Center Mall TIF to extend the eligible expenses from five to 10 years.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Have motion to second, any further discussion? Mr. Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would add, there's a letter that's attached, I would assume, just as a framework for a letter. You know, I would like to see us add even a couple sentences about how this would benefit Clay County in terms of the development, certainly highlighting that we're such a quickly growing county in the entire state. I think just for us, it's important to highlight that as well.
I would say certainly at your discretion. One point I've just noticed too is, obviously with how quickly this is coming together, we do have a deadline for materials submitted by 1:00 PM today, so we can work with County Administrator Larson to rectify that. We do also have a notice out to the school board. I talked to Superintendent Lunick yesterday. I think he was going to have a conversation. Not sure if the timing works out to get in front of their board, but he may be able to authorize it, and knowing we'll probably be going to the Senate side too, having these will be great.
Check.
Thank you.
Steve, no problem making those adjustments? Okay. To Commissioner Krabinoff and Gross, can we incorporate that into your motion, that those additions?
Yeah, let me step.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes, and Derek, as always, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being so flexible and willing to be a part of this. Grateful.
Okay, next, request approval to restructure the landfill employee structure. And we have HR Director... No, I'm sorry, we have Corey Bang.
I don't want the HR Director job, thank you. No offense, Derek.
Well, we already have a current.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all know, Brett Rice left approximately a month ago, and I've been covering the landfill since then. It's kind of come to my understanding or my belief that we do not need an actual landfill onsite manager. What we need is a landfill technician. The difference would be the manager had supervisory duties over the other two employees that were out there. What I would propose is that I would take over those manager duties of supervising the people, and we would hire just a tech who could handle the well testings, dealing with stand tech and all that kind of stuff. So that would be my request today.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
And do you want to... I do want to bring up, and I think Commissioner Gross was also there, we, this was brought before the pick, and it was sent forward with approval.
Yes, I also brought it to SWAC last week, and they extended it forward with their approval also.
Thank you. Just wanted to offer some feedback that the SWAC committee brought up. Certainly, we've talked in a number of our departments how hiring is challenging, and sometimes the applicant pool is a lot smaller than we were hoping. But I think it's important to constantly be looking at what the requirements for the jobs are, if we're alienating a certain applicant from applying because of a challenging requirement. And as the requirements were written in this position specifically, it did cause a little bit of a challenge. You're looking for that unicorn of an applicant, if you will, and really, the SWAC committee did not want to sacrifice the technical requirements that come into effect with the landfill. By this change, we really don't feel that that's happening. We have great partners that we can contract for work if needed, and really felt like this oversight by you for this position would be helpful. So we did ask that the SWAC committee had the opportunity to review this in a year, just to see how everything is going, but I did, was recommended unanimously to this board to approve.
Just have a question on, you think you anticipate you need backfill, or are your employees going to apply for this?
The employee that we are thinking of promoting to this position is an intern roster position at this time, so there wouldn't be actual backfill. We could fill it with another roster. That's already been approved.
Any other discussion? Not a... We have motion to second, so all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thanks, Corey.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chief Deputy Martin, and is the sheriff with us this morning?
He's at the Exenissues this morning.
Yes, he has a chamber event this morning.
Oh, yeah, he's in Issues. I'd be there if I weren't here. Request, request approval for Resolution 2024-13, Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Joint Powers Agreement with the State of Minnesota. Chief Deputy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you're aware, you've probably seen this one before come through, this is an agreement that we've been involved with, with the State of Minnesota and the Minnesota BCA since 2007. It's in regards to internet crimes and investigations on children, dealing with the internet or any computer-based crimes that they're involved with. We have currently two investigators that focus on these crimes and the investigations. Our involvement with Minnesota ICAC would allow those two investigators to attend training, to network with other investigators throughout the state, and to use resources throughout the state. So we would ask that we be allowed to continue with this agreement.
Any questions, Chief Deputy?
Aren't we already doing this, or is this something new?
We are currently involved with it, but we bring the resolution back to the board so that we can stay involved with the Joint Powers Agreement.
So you need a new resolution?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Have motion, we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second from Commissioner Mojo. I just want to make an observation on this. For three years, I ran a police unit of juvenile and family investigations, which dealt with child abuse and sexual abuse of children. And when I was doing this, it was just the beginning of the internet issues. And I've had the good fortune of going to ICAC and being trained with them. This is something law enforcement generally is a little reluctant to go into details because it is so disturbing with the victims that we have involved in this, and ICAC, and the national network that's been put together has been so effective at addressing these issues, and has, every time you pick up the newspaper, you see some perpetrator who has been caught trafficking pornography of children and sexual abuse of children on the internet. This is probably one of the most important functions, I think, law enforcement can do for our public and the most vulnerable population. So good work. We do it well here in this part of the world. I was very impressed when I came here in '06 with, now he's lieutenant detleff, with the detective who devoted so much time, who's actually nationally coveted for the expertise he developed in it. So good work, and thank your detectives for it, because I know it's gruesome work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you. As always, we appreciate your support.
Next, we have our county administrator, request approval to designate the existing detoxification facility space within the Family Service Center to the West Central Regional Juvenile Center. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also have Josh Shawson, the director of the West Central Regional Juvenile Center, here with me today. As this board is well aware, at this point, we've spent a better part of a year starting our building committee of identifying different ways to utilize the space that the detox facility will be vacating here hopefully by late August, early September of this year. We had a work session this past Tuesday where a number of departments came forward to share their thoughts of how they could utilize the existing space if they were allowed, and after, after hearing those presentations, the West Central Regional Juvenile Center's presentation was brought forward as probably the most supported idea. I have Josh here. Josh is going to provide a little bit of a brief oversight of what they've done. I think what James and Josh and their staff have done is a great work in looking at trying to increase our continuum of care for the needs of our youth, and I think this is another great opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Our proposal for the detox space is a female-specific program. The proposed program would operate under our current non-secure detention license, offering a very unique and needed program, a transitional living skills program for teenage girls. The licensure would remain with the Department of Corrections. Programming would be aimed for older teens who have engaged in high-risk or criminal behavior, who are stable but in need of transition programming. This program would be heavy on community engagement, skill-building, personal growth. The population has unique needs and requires a special approach. We are considering a certain program where our staff would be trained in a program called Girls Moving On. This is a program that can address childhood trauma and relational violence. Our program for this space would be staffed 24/7, professionally staffed 24/7, and offer a full range of programming and services. We've seen a large increase, a spike increase in female placements, bed usage since 2021 to 2023. In 2021, we had 1,900 female bed days. Last year, we had 3,071 female bed days. This was in the non-secure unit. In the secure unit, 2021, we saw 2,200 female bed days used. 2023, we saw 4,790. So placing agencies are placing more females, and this requires a certain level of intervention, certain level of programming, and certainly approach. We do receive weekly, if not daily, requests for programming like this. We currently offer programming like this for the male population. However, we do not have the space, because of our licensure and because of the gender-specific programming needs, we do not have the space for a female version of this program. In early March, we did have an informal walkthrough of the space with the DOC and got an informal nod. However, we are seeking your official... We're seeking approval to use that space for this, for this, what we perceive need, great need in our, in this area of the state.
Any questions? Kevin?
The, this would be, non-secure, of course, is a Clay County facility, and I know in the past, we've had some non-members be able to use that facility. When you go in, when we go into this new program area, do we have a, do we have a timeframe in mind that we're, these people would enter this program, how long they would be there?
Right now, our, if we use our male program as, if we mirrored that, the residents are programmed anywhere from six to nine months. Usually, it's that pivotal year or so, you know, in that range between 17, 18, and 19, where these young adults are transitioning from in and out of foster care homes, or in and out of institutions, in and out of informal-type living arrangements, and need a stable place, you know, with counseling services and schooling. a stable place, you know, with counseling services and schooling, job coaching. And so, that just takes time to establish those relationships and that framework to hopefully launch into successful adulthood. So, anywhere from six to nine months or more.
So, these are potentially additional people that could be in there? And you mentioned the education piece, and right now, where the public schools offers the curriculum. So, can they handle the additional capacity?
Yes, we're looking at eight to 10 beds. And so, with the population of this particular program, probably half of them would be looking at doing a GED, and/or enrolling in a college or tech program, tech school program. And the other half, roughly four or five, would be enrolled in the high school program. So, that would be easily absorbed.
When I got my tour, when I was first elected, I visited with the program that's currently in existence for the male participants. And I was in there, and they explained to me, they shop, they prepare meals, they have meals together, and a young man was there getting assistance and filling out his application to M State while it went through. Looks like it's a pretty effective program for them. I think it's incumbent on us, I wasn't aware females weren't included in that, it's incumbent on us to provide equity and opportunity to the women who are coming through that process as well. Any other questions? Yes, Paul?
Yeah, just to make a comment, you know, as we had this discussion, and I too have seen a little bit what you've done with the male group down there, I just want to say thank you. I'm so moved by this, every time I see the continuum of care that we give people that are just really need this health and mental area, and doing our very, very best to transition them back into a healthy way of living. So, I wanted to, I didn't get it wrote down, I completed, what's the name of the program again? I wanted to write it down.
We don't have an official name for the program just yet.
Okay.
But the proposed program framework that we would be training our staff in would be called Girls Moving On.
Okay, very good. But it was part of something else that you mentioned earlier? No? Or that was it?
You were talking about training staff.
I thought it was...
How much more, excuse me?
Oh, go ahead, please.
How much more staff are you going to need for this?
The proposal includes for the 2025 budget, two staff, additional staff.
And it's up to $200,000 for renovation of the...
Correct.
Height.
Yep. We worked with the maintenance, we worked with Joe Olson and Maintenance Department. They came up with $41,900 for capital improvements, electrical plumbing, paint, ceiling tiles, things like that. Of course, we still need to go through at some point formally with the DOC. And then FFNE came in, $68,000, with some contingency funds rounding out to $200,000 for the startup.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Mojo?
Josh, can you, for the public, just give a little bit of a description? You talked about the calls coming in every 24 to 48 hours, most of the time not from Clay County, there are other areas as well. In a case where you get a county asking for a bed and one's not available, what happens? Where are these kiddos in limbo?
Yes, thank you. Good question. So, we work with probation officers, we work with social services, social workers, and depending on the need and depending on the case, that particular worker may spend hours on the phone, you know, or if that youth is in the hospital, the hospital worker will spend hours on the phone looking for an appropriate place, depending on the need. You know, we're so fortunate in our county, because of the support of the board, to have a facility like we do to serve our area. So, our youth who need this type of programming don't have to wait, they're accepted immediately. When we get calls from other areas, sometimes those workers have been in hotels, or they've been at the social services building in whatever county or part of the state, sleeping, taking shifts, supervising those kids until a bed opens up somewhere that will take them, which is very unfortunate, but is a reality. But that does not happen here in Clay County.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that, please. We talk about the continuum of care and a lot of different dialogues around some of the initiatives that this board is taking under our wing. And this board has taken a really large stance to not settle for what you talked about being an appropriate placement for care. We are doing things in the PRTF and what has been done at the Juvenile Detention Center to really deal with the challenges that youth are facing in our community and providing them with tools, as you talked about, to hopefully succeed once they graduate out from these programs and foster care and whatnot. And it seems as obvious, when you talk about numbers doubling with the, you know, we talk about women, but I'm going to, they're girls, the placements that are needed for girls, why we wouldn't react to provide programming-specific care in beds for them, it just is obvious. And obviously, it comes down to dollars, and really with the presentation that we had last week, the dollars that are required to set up this space for this was substantially cheaper. But in the long run, I think it really fits into that vision for care that this board has set aside for the youth in our region. And I know it's difficult and challenging work. I am really grateful that the staff that you and James have over there are willing to do this, but it's not an exciting thing, it's not something that we're really proud to have to have, but I will say, I'm really proud that we do. I'm really proud that Clay County has stepped up in the capacity that we have to have a facility that can help provide tools for young people to succeed, so thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, I got to make a couple of other points, too. So, the numbers that you talked about in terms of the increased calls for space for girls, you mentioned that there were some that were involved that would have been met by the unsecure, then you talked about the demands on the secure. And the secure went from, you gave a number up to like 4,000 or something like that, right?
Yep, 2,200 to 4,700.
So, let's not, I just want to make sure that, from the public standpoint, that we haven't ignored the girls. Because in the secure program, you know, that's 11 counties, and we do bring those in, and they do get the same care in the secure portion as the males get. It's just that that extra program in the non-secure, we simply didn't have the space available, and that's what we're looking for now. Now we have an opportunity to go that route and add that extra space to provide.
Yes, yes, and thank you, Commissioner, that's a very good point. And to that point, as you know, youth don't stay in secured detention, they must move on somewhere at some point. And an option like this is another opportunity for our local girls who are in need of a service like this to simply stay in the area and move from detention to a program like this, if it's an option.
So, if I can, so going from that note to the other points that I want to make here, and this goes to, having been on the regional, chairing the Regional Juvenile Center for years, prior to us being able to expand that facility, there were times when we had capacity issues. And we had our own members who were dealing with this, where we had to turn away beds, including Clay County. We didn't even have room for our own people because of the program. And fortunately, when we expanded that facility, we haven't had that issue. And one of the things that we've always talked about within that regional scope with the 11 counties is that we would always maintain a level of space for the member counties before, they would take priority versus non-members. And I guess I'm looking at, I'm talking to you about this, about, we're going to probably maybe want to look at creating a policy here. And that being said, because like you said, we're going to be hiring two new people to work this, those are going to all be Clay County dollars. I mean, we have the opportunity to get some non-county revenue in there. But what I want to make sure of is, we always have the capacity availability of our Clay County female kids to be in this if they need be. And do you follow where I'm going with this?
I do.
And that, so, you know, I want to make sure that if we end up having a Clay County youth that fits that area to go into that facility, into that program, that we should make that available to them first. And that might mean that we always, you know, you said this can be up to, you said eight beds? Is that what you're talking about?
Eight or 10.
Okay, so whatever that number is, and DOC is going to determine that for us, right? That's just how that works. But to always have a cushion there, you know, in other words, we don't want to fill it up to the point where, I mean, with non-Clay County kids, and then all of a sudden, we have needs of our own. And it doesn't take away, that goes to the question that Commissioner Mojo asked, too, what happens when you have to turn them down, and what work goes into that? But because this is a Clay County facility, I think it still needs to be prioritized for our kids first. And I think, and you might want to work with Steve on that and James, but I think we're going to have to come up with some sort of a policy there to make sure that we have that protection.
As Mr. Campbell stated, we get compensated from other counties when they bring them here. Can you tell me what that compensation is? How much do we get when another county brings someone in here? Do they pay for it fully, or what's the daily rate?
Well, he's looking that up. I can maybe talk to you about the secure. On the secure side, I believe that number's $320 a day now, isn't that, I think that's what it is.
Okay.
And I think we're going to have to establish that rate for...
Yeah, I believe during our work session, Josh was able to provide a tentative budget that was put together by James, and I think that, again, a portion of that budget was factored in having some youth from other counties in the facility.
Yeah, the daily rate, the proposed daily rate, $375.
Okay. So, what if we have a Clay County person in there, how much are they charged, or where does that money come from?
That comes from our, that comes from our internal budget.
So, those, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gross, Rhonda, or Rhonda would have money in her budget that, we're already utilizing those funds at other facilities. And so, I think, as we talked about, that's one of the benefits of offering that, again, within our community. It's not necessarily saving dollars as much as it is on the per diem piece, it's allocating that to our program, but then it also then keeps our social workers and probation officers from having to drive to other facilities across the state where we're paying gas and per diems, overnight visits. So, that's one of the benefits of having the program here within the community.
The short answer to that, Commissioner Gross, is that they're levy dollars.
Okay.
That pay for that.
Thank you.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move, and I don't know, I think we could probably do this, I think we have two different line items here, I think we could do it all in our one motion, I think. But I would move that we designate the existing detox facility to the West Central Regional Juvenile Center for the purpose of non-secure programming for females. And within that motion, I would also ask that we inquire to Minnesota Department of Corrections for an inspection to fulfill that programming opportunity.
Have a second?
I'll second that. I think that department, is that the next item, though?
Yeah, I'm going to say...
Yeah, I just include it all into one.
Point of order here is, Commissioner Campbell's included item six on today's agenda in addition to this. So, if we have any discussion on questions about item six, we can discuss that now. If not, we can move on. Okay. No further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Sign five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, and Josh, you guys have an incredible facility over there. And it's not a secret, with the membership we've got, with 11 counties, including Cass County, North Dakota, it's well-known, and you guys have the phone ringing all the time with people wanting to take advantage of the facility. But I just go back to the original idea, I discussed it with Paul Laney, with Sheriff in Cass County at that time, and he was adamant about wanting to get his kids over here, because they get educated, they get psychiatric resources, there's so many good things going on, he wanted to be part of that. And you guys have maintained a wonderful standard, we're grateful.
Mr. Chair, could I just clarify with Commissioner Campbell, that in his motion, that included the utilization up to $200,000 of county reserve funds?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, county reserve funds, or I know, I still think that whatever those two building fund line items are, I think they could be looked at, too.
Okay.
You know, I think the $200,000, if we don't come up with other resources, then it would be reserve dollars, but I think that can be a separate conversation, that Joe can come back to us and see where he feels that money is available. I don't think we need to designate it as reserves right now, because I think Joe has said in the past that he still has some money in a couple of those different, we remember that discussion through our capital committee or...
Okay, thank you.
Did we vote on that? We didn't vote on it?
No.
No, we didn't.
Did we vote on that? Oh.
Yes, you voted.
Yeah. Yeah, we voted.
Okay, you say so.
Er, you're up. Our annual department update from our Veteran Service Officer Kurt Cannon. Morning. Morning. This has got to be, this has got to be good if he's got a movie.
I found this in the archive. Nobody else can think of PowerPoint, so I thought I'd bring something.
Yeah, nice picture.
Set of papers. Chair, Commissioners, the Mentioned Service Office, 2023 update. Three of us, myself, Jennifer, Bonnie. Couple things about our office, just update for federal, state, and county.
Licensed, thank you. Advocates are nationally accredited. Assist vets, families, widows with forms, anything possibly you can think of veteran-wise. Get to the good stuff. National service organizations that we work with, the American Legion, Ambets, Disabled American Vets, North Dakota, Minnesota, VAs, and the Veteran of Foreign Wars. Those are the federal ones. VA benefits that we provide in our office amongst other things, these are the specified ones, pension, education, training, home loan guarantees, life insurance, burial memorial benefits, health care, and the largest one of them all is the disability compensation. A lot of extra time into public relations, speaking events, outreach events in our office. So we do a ton of those to get out in the public. Disability compensation means a vet can accrue disability benefits with the VA, health care, or a service connection. And the service connection means it's an injury sustained while in service. That's incurred. It's aggravated, meaning it was prior to service, but the service aggravated the injury. And then a presumptive, each combat or theater has presumptive conditions that the VA has conceded, meaning if you have the diagnosis and you have the location or the combat of operations, then you put those two together for a service connection. And you can also go secondary off of a primary. So you can go secondary off of a direct service connection. For example, diabetes can be primary, neuropathy can be secondary to those. So the wheels are always spinning. Sometimes mine are overheated, but that comes with my age probably. But there's always a way, 90% of a way, to try to get these folks service-connected. And what that does is service connection is zero to 100%. Zero, meaning that you can only go to the VA for that particular specified service connection. You can't use the whole VA if you're service-connected for a zero. 10% to 100%, you can use the whole VA, like a Sanford or a Assentia. But that also brings a monthly compensation to the vet. 10%, 170 a month, all the way to 4,000 a month at 100%. So some cases, money back to the vet is well-needed, so. Our claims process, phone call, walk-in, schedule an appointment, initiate, we develop the claim, go get records, look at their DD 214, see what their job was, all that in our decision-making. Submit the appropriate paperwork depending on the scenario. Could be widows, could be pension, could be service connection, could be state grants, anything in that sort. Every vet has a different scenario. It's not apples to apples on everyone, so. And as you develop those, the story, you get more in-depth in the story and learn more claims or more possibilities for the vets. So usually, that's what we do in our office. You come in for one, you probably leave with five. So we're exploring all avenues for a vet to try to capture their total benefit package. Treatment court is still alive and available. We do have one and we're screening for one currently, so we're getting back on track. We were silent there for a while. The vets were being good. Or the vets finally identified themselves in this case, so. Sometimes they don't want to be identified as a vet until they, in my opinion, that they learn there's treatment court to help them out, so then they're vets, so. It helps, but we're getting back on track. On Wednesdays, we meet at noon in the chamber, so it's pretty nice. Currently, since 2022, we have three full-time staff, myself, Jennifer, and Bonnie. And then some numbers that I thought were interesting. We have 3,478 identified vets in Clay County. The State Soldiers Assistance Program, that's a state for financial assistance and grants. And I found this quite interesting. Our 3478 vets, we produced $74,335 to Clay County vets in assistance. And if you look at the three below, Anoka's six times, five times larger, they produce 40,000. Dakota's six and a half times larger, they did 82. And Hanipen is 15 times larger and did 86. So we did great work last year for financial assistance for vets. We had the operational grant for 12,500. We were approved for that. Nationally accredited. Last year was Wisconsin, this year's Denver in May of this year. Functional Zero, once again, homeless identified veterans on Functional Zero. I use the word identified pretty strongly because sometimes I'm unaware they're a vet. The big one in our office in Clay County, the DMV passed in 2023 for Minnesota vets. The benefits just started in January of '24, and we've had great response, emails, thank Tabs, license, plates, registration, ID card fees, and title transfers are free starting in January. And then July 1 is sales tax on vehicle purchases. A vet would have to be a permanent in total. That means he's 100% permanent total, which is the highest you can get, or individual unemployability, when he can't work due to a service connection. That means he's permanent total, so those two. Currently, this year, we have a, we have an, well, I added to that bill. Once passed, it's a little easier to amend, I was told, but not very. But I forgot the surviving spouses when we did this, so this is quite ironic. I had four phone calls after it passed from surviving spouses if they were included, so I felt kind of bad. So that's on the docket this year for widows to get the bill, so. We'll see if that goes. Property tax is another one I'm looking out for, property tax exemption, and I'll go over some numbers. So those are the, there's many bills, but those are the two I'm tracking for veterans. Post 9/11 bonus, Veterans Omnibus Bill in 2022, Governor Walz signed. It's a service bonus payable to eligible veterans served from 9/11/01 to 8/30/21. So it's a long history of payable bonuses in Minnesota going back years. They passed that. You can get 600, 1,200, or 2,000. 2,000 if your soldier died in combat. So we did a lot of 600 and 1,200s in Clay County totaling 394 post-9/11 bonuses for $345,200 to veterans of Clay County. Property tax exemption, this is great, great news for our vets. I'm not sure about the city and county, but to get property tax exemptions with veterans, you have to be 70% or higher. And getting to 70% is pretty, not an easy task, so. And then 100% permanent total is beyond 100, so. So 70 to 100, you get 150,000 exemptions off your market value. And 100 permanent total, the top, you get 300,000 off of your estimated market value for the veteran's house. So I started late 2015, and in '16, we had 124 in the city of Moorhead. As of 2023, we have 276. So that's a great increase. This is Clay County, we had 76 in '16, and we're currently at 170. So we almost got 450 exemptions for veterans in Clay County. These are off our charting software, some kind of relations to last year to see if we're keeping on pace or increase. Total forms used, that's claims, that's anything we go into our software and produce a form. Last year, 81836, this year, last year, 1851. Total communications, a little skewed a little bit if Kurt remembers the chart, but 2022, 3201, and 2023, 3461. In-person office visits, that's sitting down with the vet. That doesn't account for walk-ins. And do you have a minute? 1756, 2022, 2042. And then the last, the retro payments. So we put in a claim and we save the date of January, let's say, and the claim gets done in July, and they get service-connected for a percentage, whatever percentage that matters, they get paid retro pay all the way back to when we started the claim. So 2022, we did 883,29586. 2023, almost a million dollars in retro pay. That's not considering their monthly continued payments for the rest of their life until And that's it. Some comparisons. Last thing, thanks for your support for the veterans of Clay County. You've always, since my time here, have been wonderful.
You mentioned the DMV, the motor vehicle, that's a new tax break for veterans. How do they know about that? So, you know, if a veteran goes in and they want to renew their tabs online, how does it know that they're a veteran?
Well, we have a summary of benefits that's printed every year. That comes out in May, actually. It's a one-page letter. That's the Holy Grail. They should bring that in. That lists your service time, your percentage, and if you're permanent total, it'll say yes.
But I, you know, people might not go into, you don't have to go into the DMV anymore. You can do it all online.
Honestly, I have to go online and try to submit. I didn't mind in person.
Well, I'm wondering, I'm not a vet, but I'm wondering if a vet does go on there and they, you know, can there be a spot on there where it might ask them the question? Are you, because otherwise, they might just go through and renew it and...
I would gather it says, are you a vet and then submit some documentation, I'd gather. But I'm going to have to go through the process.
Yeah, I know it's new, but I'm just thinking, how many...
I worked with Chelsea on this when it got passed. I called her and they were already locked and loaded from the state, but I can give her an email and see.
I guess if it's going to require some education on the part of the vets to know...
Right. It's interesting. I usually walk through all programs, so I know what I'm talking about, so. But that is a new, and that's once again, how do you get the word out? You know, we're in the Legion, where the state stuff comes out, but you got a vet that don't have radio or TV, or they don't get the Legion newsletter, which goes all over the place. It was in the newspaper, but then again, do you read it? So it's always word of mouth is our best.
Speaking of that, the one morning I woke up and the first thing I saw on TV was you, and it was kind of a...
What?
Yeah, it was scary.
Way back to bed.
But anyway, you were there for the Vietnam Veterans Day at the...
Yes, yeah. That was a good time.
Yeah.
I try not to miss any of that stuff.
Again, thank you again for all those things where you go to on behalf of the veterans.
Yeah, they're fun, walking in and...
One thing, just to clarify, these benefits with DMV, 100% disabled is...
100% P and T, permanent total. You can be 100 without a permanent total, and that's not qualifying.
Okay, then those are the people that'd be qualified for these benefits.
Or you can be 60 or higher IU, which is a individual unemployability, means they're permanent total because they can't work due to a disability. And they would have on that sheet too, 60, permanent total, yes, paid at 100%, yes. So that's on their summary, so.
Okay.
You have to be, the words are permanent total, because you can be in a couple ways, permanent total. So that sheet is pretty much an important thing to get, benefits.
I know you've reached out to some of our car dealers and let them know when they're walking people through the finances.
They wouldn't give me a deal on cars either.
Well, I just got one.
I think I just got a deal because depending on the price of the car, the sales tax is free, so. But my wife couldn't hold off till July, so we had to get a new one.
Do you contact, I know there's veterans' benefits for funerals and stuff like that. Do you contact widows or anything like that, or are you aware? Do they have to come to you?
They would. Actually, we send out letters. Bonnie reads the newspaper daily and sends out letters to the widows that are in our database, the veterans.
Very good, okay.
They get letters, and then they meet with our office to go over death and burial benefits. So we actually had one, was it two years ago, the funeral home put on a thing at the hotel by the highway for two days that we both spoke at. So that was, that was good for them to do. Forgot what funeral home, but...
I've got a friend who has come to you with issues that he's an Army veteran, and then my father-in-law was 100 years old and World War II combat veteran from the 10th Mountain, platoon leader, and had never done his due diligence on his veterans' benefits. And he was at a point in his life to where the family needed to get him somewhere, and he did an amazing job.
Thank you.
And...
He deserved it.
Well, you deserve credit for what you do for the people that walk through your door. And if there's veterans out there that have challenges or questions, you're always there for them. And it is worth noting that, at least for the time being, you're in the courthouse now. You've been moved up here on the third floor with us because of a mishap with a water heater in your office.
I'm too close.
Sometimes we feel that way, too.
I am, by the way, police things. Chief of Police, the old Glennon, hit me up. He's retired in South Carolina, so I've been helping him, so.
Know Mike Will.
Yes, yes, you know him, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Kurt, as always, it's a pleasure.
Yes, always, and thank you again. I mean, just the support that you give our office and especially the veterans of Clay County, it's just not me. So hear us out and understand, so. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good enough.
Okay, next up, we have got committee reports. We're going to start with Commissioner Kravenoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This last week, I actually didn't have any committee meetings, however. One of the assignments that you allowed me be part of was going to St. Paul to testify for House File 4204, which was authored by Representative Keeler in the request of a... for House File 4204, which was authored by Representative Keeler in the request of a, a, excuse me, Capital Investment Committee hearing that was held on Wednesday, requesting the $10 million ask from the bonding group for a PRTF. Our Administrator Steve and Rhonda Porter, Head of Social Services, joined me. So along with Representative Keeler and I, we gave a testimony for the needs in our area and being supported by 18 colonies and three tribes. There was about 15 representatives at the meeting. I thought it was well received. There was a representative from Ely that went out of his way at the end to say thank you to Clay County for bringing something forward like this. In this request of $10 million, it'll be a phased approach, so this is the initial ask for this session, and it would be for a 12-bed unit. The operations of that facility would be by provider, so this is a public-private joint effort. After we finished the hearing, we did a little strategizing for what, what's to come, and will be working with more outreach over the next couple of weeks. Also, then we met with Senator Kupac, and as we lined that up, Senator Kupac had brought in two other senators to join us, Senator Rasmussen out of the Otter Tail area, Otter Tail County area, and then also Paul Edkey from Hubbard County. Senator Rasmussen is actually on the bonding committee, so it was really ideal to have him in the room, have the same discussion. So Senator Kupac also has sent a file, 4256, and that is a mirror image of what Rep. Keeler has in her, her bill. This is drawing bipartisan support. I am very excited about the prospects of moving forward, and we'll see how far we can take it across the line in this session, which ends in not too long, what, six weeks? So we have a lot of work to do, but I thank the whole board for allowing me to go and be with Steve and Rhonda, and I think it was a very successful day.
And thank you. Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week after board, I did meet with Commissioner Krabnikoff, Rhonda, and Administrator Larson to complete the requirements for the bonding component before the hearing. So a lot of work was done by both Rhonda and Administrator Larson to get that lifted by the deadline that day, so thanks for that. Attended the work session with you all after board. On Tuesday evening, I attended a meeting with the Fair, Fair Board members, the President, the Treasurer, and then another Director, to discuss opportunities and successes as we plan for the summer event. The next day, I did watch, and thank you to Commissioner Krabnikoff for his testifying. Did, really represented Clay County well at the Capitol and was excited to hear the additional work that went on afterwards. So I did watch from afar, and then that afternoon, I had a meeting with the Extension Regional Supervisor for the county employees, talked about follow-up from the conversation the evening before and opportunities and successes as we plan for summer partnerships and programming. Thursday morning, I attended the SWAC Committee meeting at the Resource Recovery Facility. Good updates from staff on, on all of the activities happening there. We did talk about the reclassification of the employee that this board acted on. Commissioner Campbell gave a good update on the Prairie Lakes facility. Certainly lots happening there. Moving forward with a website for not only employees, but also the public awareness on the great work that happens there. After that meeting, I attended a joint meeting with the city of Moorhead on the, is it the JPA or the contract for space for that facility? That's something that's required after a year, but wanting to make sure we're continuing to evaluate how that works. It's such a great partnership that we have with the city of Moorhead. That afternoon, I also attended a meeting with Commissioner Gross and Administrator Larson, Red River, Red River Communications, did reach out to us. They were successful with the first round of the grant for Northern Clay County to make sure, ensure that broadband is accessible, so they did secure that grant. Talked a little bit about another grant that's been opened a little quicker than normal, and talked about how in evaluating the last cycle, grants that were approved had a higher success with the partnerships of the local government entity. Did talk about, there are some remaining ARPA funds available that certainly could fit that, that scope, understanding that Commissioner Campbell is on that committee, but both Commissioner Gross and I did, did talk about the opportunity that we could find some funds available to help secure that second round of grants for Southern Clay County. We'll meet a little bit after this meeting, and there might be a possibility for an ARPA committee meeting to kind of vet that through, understanding that some of the other communities that did find some funds were able to do that with ARPA funds because broadband was identified there. So more to come on that, but wanted you to be aware, certainly, and I've said to the board several times, to make sure that we're ensuring that there's broadband accessibility for all of Clay County, given how populated we are, certainly anything we could do to help, help with that is, in, in my view, in our best interest. That afternoon, I also attended the Moorhead-Clay County Joint Powers Authority meeting here. We did have property acquisition status reports. They did give an update on the litigation. Both Mayor Carlson and Commissioner Campbell were able to sit through some of those hearings. We did approve a forest mitigation acquisition opportunity and a amendment to a negotiation RHDP payment. We did have a closed session, executive session, on some negotiations, and then we did approve the 2024 farmland lease, leases, and then sent lease termination letters on some properties. Not, those were not a surprise, understanding that that was the natural course of action there that we were anticipating yesterday. Unless you want to hear how I was in a ball since my oldest turned 18 yesterday. I did attend the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus meeting. Good updates on all of the updates happening at the Capitol. Certainly, they're keeping rural counties' interests at hand and making sure that we're staying aware of all the happenings. There was a very large component that was added in in regards to tax forfeiture, about $109 million to help offset counties for payments to those cases. However, it's still to be determined as to how that will be filtered through to the counties, so more to come on that. But Commissioner Gross was also there, so he can update if I missed anything, and that concludes my report. Oh, I did not conclude my report, excuse me. I had a long conversation with Nathan Zacharias from AMC. There's, excuse me, there's some legislation going through that, that really has to do with broadband and making sure that there's some components for pay Davis Bacon Wage, but...
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wages into that. Clay County, well, not Clay County, but AMC currently opposes that due to the enormous cost that it does require to bring broadband into some of our rural areas. Adding that prevailing wage component would really just, it's just unequitable, and making sure that, that senators are aware of what that, that burden would be. It certainly is timely, given the conversation that Commissioner Gross and I had with Red River Communications. It just, when you, when you're securing grants for millions of dollars to bring service to 22 or 25 people or families, it really shows how it's not equitable. So I am writing a letter of, a letter to Senator Kupac. He's on the committee that will be hearing that, just pointing out that it currently opposed that, that requirement being added in, and he wanted me to bring it to this board, to see if this board would be in favor of, of sending a letter to Senator Kupac, highlighting how that, that really would burden bringing additional projects to areas.
I guess that's open for discussion. Any comments?
Well, I think how important the broadband thing is to try and get into Clay County, I didn't realize that we had, missing out on so many families that don't have that good broadband available to them. I think we should look into that as important, so a letter is important.
Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to support that.
Okay. A motion to send a letter to Senator Kupac opposing the prevailing wage requirement. Okay, I would second that.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
All right, thank you. On March 27th, I attended the Prairie Lakes Municipal Solid Waste Meeting. Several things going on there, as Commissioner Mojo had mentioned. I'll start off with the financials. We're about $150,000 below last year through February in terms of cash on hand. It still is, we're still in strong position financially there. Part of that was the fact that, you know, we got some shutdowns going on. We're like a two-week shutdown there. There's some major renovations to the burners going on, that when they're done, we'll hopefully improve the capacity in steam, steam generation. The good news is, at the end of February, now Clay County was only down 15 tons in terms of deliveries to that facility, so there's, that's really made a lot of improvements. We've had significant conversations about legislative activities and supporting SCORE, additional SCORE funding. We did have a conversation about PFAS air emissions, and, you know, as, as we talked about, there's scientific evidence that 95% to 100% of PFAS can be completely eliminated through the burning process. But one of the areas that still needs studying is what comes out of the stack, what comes out, you know, after you burn it, what comes out. And, and so there's, we have five facilities in the state of Minnesota who have all agreed to go together, they're in, in, in doing a test on that. And the, the original planned scope of that was going to be $400,000, and the new amount came in at $250,000. And so they're looking for each entity to share equally in that cost. And so we, we approved $51,500 to go towards that study. And what they're going to do is they're only going to, they're going to do, they're going to study two of the five facilities, but there's two different types of facilities. There's the types that, like that we have, that have the front-end deal where you, you do some pre-sorting of material before it goes into the burner, and then there was, there's those facilities who don't, do not have that, like the Hurt facility, for example, in Minneapolis. And so, so they've agreed that, that at least one of each of those types will be studied. And there, you know, there's going to be some assumptions then that what they find in, in one will probably be similar to what they'd find in others. So that process will go on, and hopefully that comes in good, and, and that actually will reinforce the positive need for, and use of these facilities, not just in renewable energy like what we do for steam, but if it also becomes a source for removing PFAS. That's an issue that's, everybody's wondering, how we get rid of it, so. And then we did have, we've been having some conversations about the ash, and right now there's a proposal out there to do a road test where, where the ash, clean ash will be, could be put in a road. I think there's a two-mile stretch that they're going to do in Otter Tail County. And that, the cost to, the cost to provide that ash delivered would be about $250,000 or $240,000. If successful, right now, we, we budget through that facility about $400,000 to take ash to the landfill, to the ash landfill, of which we also need, that's running out of space, which I've talked about. So if that, if that, when they do that road work, if they do that, and it, and it turns out positive, we can, we would have a use for that ash, full ash amount on an annual basis. That would, and it actually would be at a cost less than the $400,000 that we're paying just to put it in the landfill. So that, that work continues. Commissioner Mojo also talked about, we had some conversations about website. There's an external website that we're looking at for people being able to go for information, and then there's also some interest by the employees to basically have an Intranet like we have here, where employees can go on and, and find out their own HR benefits and that type of thing that can be available to them. So we're working on that as well. Then on Thursday morning, I had the Prairie, or the Clay County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Commissioner Mojo reported on that. I really don't have anything to add, other than the fact that we need to continue to educate the public on the importance of not throwing lithium batteries into your, into your garbage, because that, that can lead to some real insurance issues that we have, where we've, where we've had the most, or where we've had the only fire issues has been related to lithium batteries. And we have this brand-new facility that's out there, and, and it's nice to, it'd be nice to know that we don't have to worry about lithium batteries exploding or heating up and starting on fire within that facility. Right after that, we did have our annual meeting to go over the joint contract for that, for the facility that we have here in Moorhead, and, and there were really no new areas that, that proposed changes, other than both entities. We're going to review the insurance clauses to make sure that we're, in the event that there's an injury by, not a workman's comp type of an injury, but if there's an injury on the premise that's related to citizens coming in, that we know how that, those claims would be handled, and we want to make sure, I think we're going to be asking Brian to review that as well on the county's concern. And then that's, that day, my next meeting that day was the Moorhead, Clay County Joint Powers Authority Board meeting, and again, I think Commissioner Mojo attended the same meeting, and I really don't have any additional information there, she kind of reported on the activities that took place there. On that day at 4:30, we did have the diversion board of authority meeting, and we did hear from, we got our monthly update from the CORE, project safety updates, there's been no serious injuries of that type of thing to report. Again, we received the drone footage, we had a land management update, status acquisition reports that are moving forward. We did talk a little bit about the hearings that went on in Clay County. There were two hearings in Clay County, I think last time I reported that we had, went through the one. The additional hearing in Clay County, we were successful in obtaining the necessary land needs for, for those, and there were also two hearings in Wilken County, and I guess we'd like to thank Mayor Carlson for attending those, and those were also successful in obtaining the, the land rights that we need to keep the project on time. We also did have a closed session that was... We also did have a closed session that was quite lengthy, and it gets into contract issues that remain, you know, remain out there that we continue to work on and try to resolve, so. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
Last Tuesday, I attended the work session, everybody else attended there. Thursday, we had that broadband that Jenny talked about. And the last time they asked for that grant, we contributed $5,000 to that, to that, you know. This time, I think they're sort of looking for a little bit more money, and we're just looking to work and get some more money. Ideas that we came up with, going to the West Central Initiative to see whether they could give us some money. We also talked about the townships, it's the townships that are going to be pretty much benefiting from this. You know, will the townships be willing to contribute any money to their grant? And another place to go, I don't know if the FM Chamber would do or not, but mostly with the cities, I think, but probably we could do and ask there. And then again, counting our, contacting our senators and Rep. would do, would help too there. Other place we could probably go is USDA to see whether they would help at all. I mean, there's many places that probably would help because benefiting our rural area would really, you know, help with the grant, I mean, to show that the grant would help getting broadband into our rural area. Then Monday, I attended the MRC meeting, which Jenny covered. They talked a little bit about the open meeting law, and I think we discussed some of that already, you know, as far as you have to be in attendance or you have to post stuff, but MRC is, we have most of our meetings on SUM, and they describe that MRC is a 501(c)(3) organization, and that the SUM meetings are eligible, they don't have to have a regular place to gather and stuff like that, so SUM meetings are eligible for that. It meets all the requirements. Other things, I talked a little bit about solid waste, some of the plastic that's coming in there, bale wrappings, say there's a lot of alfalfa and hay attached to those wrappings, which makes them, the bale wrappings ineligible for solid waste, so some of that stuff was Last night, I went to Felton City Council meeting. They were discussing their water district meeting, they got a map of where they want to lay out their water lines and stuff like that, had discussion on that. They got their recycling building pretty much built up there, so it looks like a pretty good deal for City of Felton getting going there, so that was a nice project getting done. Been working on that for, I don't know, five years probably, they finally got that building in there, so those are my meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, last Tuesday, I attended the group work session earlier discussed, the Family Service Center Master Plan and some legislative updates. On Wednesday, I remotely attended the financial, or Finance Committee for the Diversion Authority. General business was covered on that. There was a directive to transfer required deposits for Morehead and Clay County for the eminent domain process that we're engaged in there. The following day, I attended the Diversion Authority Board, or Diversion Board of Authority meeting, which was already been covered by Commissioner Campbell, and that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in the work session. Again, want to thank this board for making the time to have those important conversations in preparation for the issues that we addressed. Also that day, Commissioner Mojo mentioned, we had some additional conversations with the MMB documents in regards to the PRTF. I really want to thank Rhonda for the heavy lift that she worked to meet their deadline on Tuesday. On Wednesday was in St. Paul with Commissioner Krabinoff and Rhonda Porter. Again, just reiterating the great job that Commissioner Krabinoff did in his presentation. Also, just to touch base on Commissioner Mojo's comments in regards to the prevailing wage, when we did meet with Senator Kupac, I did mention two items, one, the prevailing wage issue and some of the challenges that were brought forward, and also talked about the importance of the full flood mitigation ask from a standpoint of Clay County. If you did note, yesterday, we did have an article in the Fargo Forum that highlighted your work of bringing forward the PRTF along with Representative Keeler, so that was exciting to see. On the 28th, participated in the SWAC meeting that's been thoroughly updated, also the County-City Annual Contract Update. They met with Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo with Red River Communications, that has been covered that afternoon. Participated in the Land Development Ordinance update. We looked at, reviewed the zoning and land use tables, were really trying to clean those up to make them more user-friendly for our citizens. We looked at zoning, excuse me, setbacks and lot standards, signage, what's appropriate signage, and then also special use standards such as asphalt batch plants and concrete plants, kennels, agriculture, service establishments, and storage. Participated in a brief MACA legislative update last Friday. Matt got stuck, got stuck at the Capitol, and so it was a little shorter than usual. Yesterday, participated in a meeting with Economic Development Karen Lauer from Barnesville and David Hyer from Minnesota Deed and Matt Jacobson. They're looking at a possible project in rural Barnesville area that would look like to do some expansion, and so they're looking at utilizing some job creation grants, Minnesota Investment Funds, some of West Central Initiative funds, and so we were looking at, they would need a sponsor in order for that to happen, and because of their location, Clay County would be that sponsor. So there's more, there'll be more to come before this board potentially in the future. Yesterday afternoon, I met with Sheriff Empting on a series of issues, and then just wanted to note that this last year, last year, this board approved our detox facility, substance use facility, to apply for some congressional-directed funding. Those congressional funds are going to be opening again soon, and so I've asked Rhonda and Troy and Kathy to review, review that, to see if that would be something that we could come forth and request again. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, you got anything for us? Jackie? Anybody have any other business for the good of the order? If not, I will adjourn.